Can she make a presentation today?
Yeah, Mary say you're.
Ask Mary if she wants to make a presentation or just build things up here. Oh, shucks. Now, maybe somebody else for all layers.
You sure?
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the January ninth, two thousand and eighteen, Alexander County Board of Education meeting to order. If you will, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. This evening, we have the Alexander County Baby Cougars with us, and they're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. The Baby Cougars are under supervision of Ms. Donna Abernathy. As I call your name, please come forward. Lexi Carrigan. Bryson Gaynor. Carson Head. Brett Herman. Witten Robinson. Brooks and Jackson Turner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Good job. Thank you, guys, and thank you, parents, for bringing your kids out to this meeting. We appreciate it. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our honors and recognitions, and I'll call Dr. Jennifer Heffner for our presentations.
Thank you, Chairman Bowman, board members, and audience. I say this every time, but the honors and recognition portion of the meeting is always my favorite part of the meeting. Tonight, we're going to be honoring our Board of Education and recognizing three of our schools for PBIS awards. Alexander County Schools is joining other districts throughout the state to recognize the important contributions school board members make to their communities. More than seven hundred men and women serve their communities as school board members in North Carolina. We benefit every day from the efforts and time devoted by our board members. We are very fortunate that our Board of Education is dedicated to the children of our county and our public school system. Even though we're making a special effort during the month of January to show appreciation to our board members, we recognize their contributions reflect a year-round commitment on their part. They are dedicated individuals who are committed to the continuing success of our public schools, students, and employees. I would ask at this time that I have some assistance from the central office leadership team as we make some presentations to our board members. Board members, you see that we have a variety of special gifts on the table, and when I call you up, I would ask, you did have new seating assignments tonight. Sorry that I didn't give you a heads up about that. But I would ask that you stand behind the gift area that would be where you're seated right now, okay? I'm going to recognize each board member and the communities that they serve. I would start with our new chair, Mr. Scott Bowman. He serves District One, which is considered Wittenburg, and that contains Bethlehem and Wittenburg Elementary Schools. The basket that you are receiving is a gift from all school system employees, central office employees, and it's something that I certainly hope that you will be able to enjoy with your families. But the gifts on the tables, they're school-specific, and I need to mention this. The banner is from Bethlehem Elementary School, and there are just some individual things that we'll pass around later tonight. Next, our new vice chair, Mr. Harry Schrum, also serves District One, Wittenburg, which includes Bethlehem and Wittenburg Elementary Schools. Board member Sally Hardest serves District Two, Taylorsville, which includes Taylorsville Elementary School. David Odom also serves District Two, Taylorsville, Taylorsville Elementary School. Karen Brixey, District Three, Ellendale and Little River, and that includes Ellendale Elementary School. Marty Pennell serves District Four, Sharps, Millers, Sugarloaf, and Waltney, and that includes Sugarloaf Elementary, Stony Point Elementary, and Midnight Elementary Schools. Bridget Ryan serves District Four, Sharps, Millers, Sugarloaf, and Waltney, which also includes Sugarloaf, Stony Point, and Midnight Elementary Schools. And then, based on the district, our middle schools fall in there, as well as, I guess you all would serve the high school. So, at this time, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for what you do every day. Thank you for helping make good decisions for what's best for the students and staff of all of our schools, and I just appreciate your dedication and your commitment. I know that you spend many hours doing school system business, on the clock and off the clock, and the on-the-clock part is certainly not very much, but we do appreciate everything that you do. Give them a round of applause. Yes. Will we help you carry those to your car later? Will they all fit? Did I miss anybody? School administrators or school staff? Did any of you bring anything that you want to present individually? I think it would gather everybody, so it's on the table today, so.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would ask Board Member Brixey and Vice Chair Harry Schrum to help with the next presentations. Three Alexander County Schools were recognized by the Exceptional Children's Division of the North Carolinians Department of Public Instruction as part of the sixty-seventh Conference on Exceptional Children at the Career Convention Center in Greensboro on November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Ellendale Elementary was recognized as a green ribbon school, while Bethlehem Elementary and West Alexander Middle were awarded the highest recognition honor of exemplar school. Recognition is awarded based on each school's level of implementation. Each school met the requirements for recognition by demonstrating results achieved through working together, using school data to implement research-based practices, and developing supportive systems to teach all students new behaviors. Keeping students engaged and maintaining a healthy, productive school environment is more important than ever. PBIS is a framework of intervention practices, decision-making tools, and organizational systems used to establish the positive and productive learning environment needed for all students to achieve academic and social success. Schools that fully implement PBIS can expect to manage behavior more efficiently and consistently, decrease unwanted behavior, and witness a positive change in the school climate. These three Alexander County Schools were among almost six hundred schools across the state that earned one of three levels of recognition. To receive any level of recognition from the State Department of Public Instruction, these schools completed an application process that included multiple reports based on behavior and academic data. And I just will put this little tidbit in here. I saw those reports, and they were incredible as far as the amount of work and data that was collected to be submitted. The Alexander County Schools that received recognition by the North Carolinians Department of Public Construction did so because the faculty and staff at those schools demonstrated high levels of implementation based on PBIS evaluations. Alexander County Schools have been part of this statewide initiative since two thousand and ten and worked to improve PBIS implementation through ongoing evaluation. To assure that PBIS schools in Alexander County maintain fidelity of implementation, layers of support are provided by the district and the state in the form of consultation and training. I would ask Bethlehem Elementary School, the new interprinable Cheryl Triplet, and any staff members to come forward at this time. And if they want to open it, I would like to open it for the picture. So you all would stand in front of it. Audience, please give this exemplar school. Congratulations, Bethany. Dr. Maynor and any staff members from West Alexander Middle School, please come forward. Audience, give this exemplar school. And Melissa Dunn gave you a standing ovation. She is a godsend at PBIS. And last, but certainly not least, our green school, Ms. Hope, if you'll come forward, and any Ellendale Elementary staff. Okay. Okay, how are you gonna hold that hand?
We won't see this.
Oh, okay. I can wear it down.
Okay, good. Center. Audience, give this green school your hand. Congratulations, thank you.
Do Christmases.
Now, as our public comment, is there any one signed up? Okay, so no one signed up for that. Board members, you had the opportunity to review the consent agenda items. What's the pleasure of the board?
I would move to approve the consent agenda item.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, is our reports, our reports this evening. We're gonna start off with Alexander Central High School update, and Mr. Deb Ronnie, if you'll come forward, please.
Now, I don't know how the rest of you felt when you get ready to present, they walk out on you, so. Just maybe, so, no, thank you for opportunity. It's been, I struggled back over Christmas. How long ago we've been a segment, we're gonna talk about, this is a different time than what we normally present, but I'm glad, instead of throwing test scores at you and a lot of numbers, I kinda sat back and thought, I don't wanna talk about where we were, where we are right now, and where we're headed down the road, and so I think that's a good idea. But I wanna preface all of it by just simply saying, it's not me, it is teachers, it's counselors, it's coaches, it's athletic directors, it's assistant principals, it's everybody that is in this building, and ninety-nine percent of all the things that have changed and has transformed at the high school has been because of people and good ideas that they've had, and for me to get out of their way and let them work, so it's been an honor and a privilege to be a part of that over the years. As you know, high school doesn't look like it did ten years ago, twenty years ago, or thirteen, or thirty years ago. It's almost like a college campus feel now with kids coming and going, and many of you or your children have come through there during my watch, and how it has just even transformed over the years, and my children coming through there as well. So, I wanna just share a few things with you, and I kinda cover this one as far as being transformation. What is new, where we're headed? And I put the very first piece up there, not to be a negative, and to simply say, and it's the way education is going, that we're doing more with less. And that is in every department, whether it's Dale and his staff, or whether it's the central office, whatever, we are doing more with less people, and unfortunately, that's the nature of where education is going, but it is what it is. We are challenged every day. But just some things that have happened over the years. Smart Lunch, and you've heard a lot about Smart Lunch and the implementation of that process, and we are in year three of that, and I don't mind telling you, a lot of the gray hairs or the hairs that are nodding my head are because of Smart Lunch. I am a control freak when it comes to our students and our student population, but the fact that this was an initiative, again, everything that you see in front of you was things that our staff came up with. Smart Lunch gives students an opportunity to make up work if they're absent, to get things done, those that have gotta go to work. That way, the after-school activities, clubs have grown immensely at the high school and given kids opportunities from there. This has changed things like every single year, Smart Lunch, and so what we're looking at and continue to look at, some recommendations from some folks in here, is how to use that time more wisely as well, and so we're gonna be visiting some other schools in the Unifor area that have some other activities during Smart Lunch or call some different things, just to use that time wisely, and we wanna continue to reiterate to our students to use this. There's no excuse ever again for a student to say, I don't have time. They've got an hour and five minutes in the middle of the day where we got, and as it's called, timeout, where they can go and get all the help that they want. The big thing that we've gotta work on, and imagine being in a math class, if you're Elizabeth Turner, and I use her as my example, she was here earlier, that you've got twenty students in there, where typically, all twenty of those students are gonna have twenty different questions. So it's almost like going at it, fighting with fighting fire, and so that's been our biggest thing that we've talked about now, changing our approach to go do more of a common Smart Lunch, and in math is a good example, that these students are struggling on this concept, Elizabeth will take these, the other students are working on this concept, Carrie will take care of those, and so different teachers, and so, and how that's gonna come across is through common form of assessments, and so departments have to establish those and be using those every two or three weeks, but that's what, that's the direction of Smart Lunch is going now for our students. Seminar is something that really we started about three, four years ago, and kind of lost a lot of its luster or energy with that, but this year has gone back to seminar with the academy coming onboard. Academy classes meet every Monday for seminar. Second semester, they're gonna back off and go every other Monday. But just simply the things during the academy of what is high school? How do we play high school? And for a lot of our freshmen, knowing the intricacies of how high school operates is very important, but also talking about the things that they're gonna be facing, their sophomore year, their junior year, their senior year, college applications, starting already to create resumes and things of that nature. So that's what Bree and her staff and the academy are already doing. We also talk about at seminars is building relationships with students, and so we went back, staff talked about that, you know, we're struggling here, what do we need to do? And so, the idea behind seminar in ten, eleven, and twelve is that you've got that same homeroom teacher, that same seminar teacher, your tenth grade year, I traveled with you my eleventh grade year and my twelfth grade year, and so this group actually meets with their seminar teachers now twice, bi-monthly, twice a month, and it's simply number one, to look at grades. Every teacher goes through every student's grades within their seminar. We have a system of Google Doc, obviously, we're Google Doc to them, but that we have created, that teachers go in and they may list the student's name, and if it's red, we know we're failing classes, yellow, we better watch, and green, all is good, and so then we meet as an admin, staff, and counselors, and then start putting interventions in place for our students, but that is done every two weeks within our building as well. Instant acceptance stays. We were the first in the state to start this, and again, this is counselors, this is not my idea, where these colleges come on campus, they do instant acceptance, the students know before they leave at the end of the day whether they have been accepted, and the majority of them outside of Western, which is state-supported, know the academic scholarship money that they're gonna get from these institutions, and so, that has been a big hit for a lot of our folks and a lot of our kids, and again, if we can bring it to our campus, then it's gonna be more popular. Something that's gonna happen next year is gonna be an advanced placement, our AP Academy. Again, this is ideas spung off Josh Williamson and Bill Benson, as far as some ideas in going to academy or going to AP course training, that they've learned some ideas from other schools, they stole some things from West Iredale and West Wilks, and so, or Wilks Central, sorry, and so this is another way of recognizing our students, challenging our students to take higher-level courses. At the end of their senior year, there's gonna be an application process, there's gonna be a recognition, a graduation, if you take up to seven courses, there's gonna be community service hours that's gonna be required if you're within this, there's gonna be study groups, there're gonna be peer groups, kinda like the Peer Writing Center that you've heard a little bit about, where these folks, well, we're gonna also offer this up to our AP kids, the places for them to come and study and get additional help in some of our classes, and Bill will do, has done a great job in research and presenting, just kids that take AP classes and the success that they have once they get to college, and how it prepares things for some of the college courses that they're gonna have over the course of their collegiate career. Talking about AP courses, we've been challenged by our central office to offer more AP courses. When we first started, obviously, we had AP English three and four, AP Calc, AP Stats, and AP Bio, so we had five courses, and you can see out to the side, that first year, we had a hundred and seventy-four students that were participating. Enrollment has declined, okay? Number one, enrollment had declined across the system, but obviously, with some of our students even going to the early college, we still have, as of today, two hundred and eighty-nine students with only thirteen, about thirteen, twenty, thirteen, twenty-five in the building right now. We have two hundred and eighty-nine students enrolled in AP courses, but we've also added AP Chemistry, which is first this year, AP Earth and Environmental, which is in its second year, AP US Gov. and Poll, which has started this year, is coming back next year, is AP US History, and that went away, just, you hired one of my teachers as an assistant principal, and so that, we had no one certified within the building to teach that, that is coming back onboard, we're adding AP Art next year. Still some discussion about AP Calc BC, which is the second part of AP Calc AP, and whether we can teach that in a year-long course as well, so there's still some discussion about that. So, you know, we've gone from five to the potential of having eleven AP course offerings there at the high school, and you can see where students are taking a lot of advantage of those opportunities, and I think we hear so much about, we're doing so much for our lower kids, and we're doing so much for that lower twenty-five, thirty percent. We're doing a lot for our upper twenty-five percent, we just probably don't do as good a job of advertising, that's what we're doing. I think the academy kind of got a bad rap, and that's what the academy was there, it's not, it's for all students when they're in the building. Couldn't do a lot of things we do without our partnership with CBCC, and I know everyone sitting here at the table and everybody in the audience knows that. Obviously, we started our senior cohort a number of years ago, this is the second year that we have the junior-senior cohort. Students obviously can enroll in CBCC, this group of seniors will leave there with twenty-three semester hours that are transferable into any institution within the state of North Carolina with the agreement that is there, and so, again, the only thing they pay is just the student activity fee, so again, a great opportunity for our students. Our CCP courses, which is Career College Promise, we have fifty-three students that are enrolled in those classes as well, outside of the cohort, and typically, that is an online course, again, that is through CBCC, and that, again, is a free opportunity for our students to gain additional credits, and that is gaining momentum, a lot of momentum, especially with our seniors and the things that are going on there. CTE opportunities, Susan works very well with CBCC, our welding certification, we've got a number of students that are leaving every day at twelve-thirty, one o'clock, going to CBCC's campus, and if you're not building that welding facility, it's worth your while just to walk over there, it's state-of-the-art, and so our kids will leave there with certifications that they need to hopefully gain employment here in Alexander County, and even some of those students that are over there, it's not, it's some of our kids that need that, and without that, they probably don't graduate high school, and so they have found a niche, they have found what hopefully their career will be out in public once they get to that point. Adult high school opportunities, sometimes as frustrating as that can be with Dr. Heffner and I, and some of our kids looking for the easy way out with some things, and we have to coerce or beg or refuse whatever we do to keep them from going over there, that wasn't here six, seven years ago, and with Lynda Graham's help and a lot of bringing those opportunities, even our folks that are above the school age to go back and earn that high school diploma have been very valuable for our community as well. But again, with a lot of this comes a negative, and with the adult high school diploma, that is one of the things that we have to fight sometimes with that. The big one this year, obviously, is our academy. It's been successful up to this point. I know at the end of the semester, we'll sit down and talk about what has worked, what hasn't worked, what do we need to do to revamp, obviously, put a lot of things in place to make that better. Currently, there are thirteen total teachers set up in three-man teams. We do have one that's within the math, cause math has additional with the foundations in the math Part B, more sections in it, so that took four teachers out there. Everybody within the academy is teaching one course outside the academy, so that helps them as well. You know that we have a devoted counselor and director, and Natasha and Bree are phenomenal what they do through help with Dr. Curry, we're doing some language live with some of our students that were identified before they go into English one, to get them caught up, smaller learning environments, a lot more one-on-one with our English teachers, they'll move right into English one this semester, so we'll hope to see successes from that. So a lot of this will be things that in June and July, we'll be able to report out. Weekly seminar has been very important, building those relationships. One that probably we knew, but there was no way within scheduling, is math foundations, having that same teacher from first semester as moving on to second semester. So if I had Elizabeth Turner for math foundations, then I'm gonna have Elizabeth Turner for math one Part B, so that teacher knows within the scheduling of how things used to be, I may have Elizabeth, and I may have Carrie, or, you know, vice versa, and how that, so there's a lot of carryover, those relationships are already established within those math teachers, that they've begged for this for years, for that to happen. Staff that meets weekly, that is taxing for a staff or for the academy folks to sit down and give up planning period. Once a week, and when I'm taking things away from them already, or doing things within their planning, within that planning time. But they're sitting down and they're talking about struggling students within their teams. Again, somewhat of that middle school concept and putting strategies. Obviously, you know, where it's housed in the top of the seat building. And they, you know, the rumor or to put that to rest, they do have the opportunity to interact with upperclassmen during a lot of their elective classes and a lot of their smart lunch activities. They have that opportunity. So again, we will back off a lot of that even more as time goes on during second semester to help make that transition to the sophomore year. Academics within our academy, and this will be one of the really the life sports that I did, is what we saw first nine weeks. And obviously here, in about two weeks, we'll know a lot more after the first semester is over, that the failure rate was cut in half. You can see that we only had a number of students, one student that failed all four courses. And that is a freshman repeater. So that is a young individual that is in dire straits, not a graduating high school. And a lot of things have got to change in his life or her life for that to happen. Nine that failed two and only 26 that failed one course. So that was cut in half. The one thing that has not, or I thought would be a little bit different, is the number of discipline referrals. And that did not, that was not drastically reduced. I still think that students coming to the high school, that you see a transformation. So I want to be able to compare semester to semester. And I've always said it, Crystal being in here and Janelle being in here, that there's a transformation that takes place over Christmas with freshmen. And so we call them freshmoors a lot of time. But they somewhat grow up. They understand the process of what high school is all about. They understand, and I call it play school, and they understand some of those things. So we'll compare first semester, second semester, once we get to that point. And I've only hit some of the highlights, but you know, you could go back and you can talk about we've MCDs. We didn't have that. Early graduates, the E3 initiative, the one-to-one, which took for years to, you know, the two-year process to get to that point. And so many people have been instrumental. So you can sit up here and talk for 20, 30 minutes about a lot of the things. But I just wanted to reiterate and bring to attention a lot of the things that have happened over the course of several years over there. And again, it is great people getting out of their way and letting them go to work and do great things and trusting them to do that job and providing the resources to be successful. So just a few things I want to share with you. I'll entertain any questions if you have at this time.
Mr. Ronnie, I'd just like to say I've had, I've got freshmen. And I've been happy with the freshman academy. I've had some emails with teachers and communications and it's been great. And what I see, they're there to help. And not say those years are, but, but they're, those students need to understand how to do high school on their own. Not on their own, but they've got to grow up a little bit. And so I've been very pleased.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank Mr. Ronnie and his staff. A lot of folks, when we put it in the context, five days a week, Alexander Central grows the town of Taylorville. It's almost like having two cities. We have roughly 2,300 people in the entire town of Taylorsville. But when school commences and the staff roll in, it's like our city doubles. And Officer Handby, she can attest that there's a lot of things that go on in the high school environment that, you know, require a lot of attention. But the offerings at this high school, which all of us were, with the exception of Ms. Rixey, were graduates of. If you go back, like I would, plus Allen.
Sorry.
But, you know, if we just reflect back.
Just a couple of years ago.
Just two years ago, 10 years ago, it's a number. But anyway, the offerings today and the technology and the, the learning that takes place, you know, it's, I have trouble keeping up with my kids when they were in elementary with their work. But hats off because it's a very complex operation. And it's a thankless job. You know, the weather gets bad. It's, it's, it's Dr. Heffner's fault. Dr. Griffin the third, Mr. Ronnie. But in essence, you know, it's a city within a city. And a lot of things, good things go on. And the rumor mill is just a buzz always, you know. The opportunities that exist in 2018, such as the cohort, early college, and the high school freshman academy itself. Those things couldn't even have been fathomed in 1989. It exists. We didn't have smart lunch. Our computers had floppy disks. So, you know, we're very fortunate. And not just the high school, but all our schools. But as a parent and as representative in School District Two, Taylorsville District, thank you for the job you do. And relay that to your staff. And as a parent of a senior, well, I have two more to come through the high school. But I'm thankful. And, and a lot of things we take for granted. But.
You know, I, I've shared many, many times, we're all fortunate. We're lucky that our children attend. And mine are just like you, early graduates of Alexander Central. Karen and Sally did not graduate from Alexander Central. But through opening doors and things, Lord led me here. And it's just been a greatest place I've ever been in my life. And I've shared that with Dr. Heffner and the leadership, everybody up here. So we're very fortunate to have our children to attend the school that we have. Within all of our school, I agree.
I would also like for you to commend your staff on my behalf. I think you guys do a wonderful job up there. And putting in the legwork to offer these extra AP classes. That need was there, just like the welding need. You've got different students for different things in life.
Sure.
So I appreciate it.
Well, I have the wrestling match going on. So I'll just sneak over there and take care of that. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ronnie.
Thank you.
Now we're going to hear from Mr. Schrum about our Sugarloaf lease agreement. Vice Chair Harry Schrum, if you'll give us the Sugarloaf Fire Department lease agreement.
Okay. As you know, in the last day of February of this year, the lease will expire. So we'll need to take action at February's meeting. And if we would like to have, I'd like to have input from all board members as to the direction that we should go. We renewed several times now. And, and I just, I just want input from everyone. And we'll try to take action at the, at the February meeting.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
We're in the building process, is the fire department currently?
Right now, it's still an open shell.
And do you know what they're waiting on currently?
I've heard several versions.
Okay.
I know that at one point, that the decision was made to go from metal interior studs to wood studs. And that became a holdup on going back and re-permitting the process. But I think that's a couple of months behind. I mean, I think we're past that by a couple of months. So I'm not sure at this point. But if you have specific questions, we'll, we'll post them to the, the fire department board.
Sure.
And how long have we been in the rental business up there?
Well, you know, we did the first year at, at, at $1 for the first year.
Right.
And then we went to the $400 rate. And geez, the, I think the renewal, I think this is this second renewal.
I think.
Yeah.
Sharon, do you know for sure how many times we have extended this?
No, I haven't looked it up.
But we leased it the first year for a dollar.
That's right.
For an entire year.
Mm-hmm.
And then we went in six-month increments at $400 a month.
Yes.
Correct.
One more question. Has, this is my fourth year on the school board, so I don't have the previous knowledge. Has the, has the board ever leased property out before to another entity in the county?
Well, I couldn't answer that. Old Wittenburg was leased to the county at no cost. The Quonset Hut behind McDonald's was leased to the county at no cost.
Both of those were zero?
Zero.
Okay.
But another way of thinking about that, those, those were, those were structures that were taken out of use.
Yes.
And this is a structure that was purchased. You know, that's not been, we've not occupied it.
Yeah.
So difference there.
It makes it difficult to make repairs at that location and implement any construction.
Is there any opportunity for the facilities committee to need? Or would you prefer that we just communicate with you directly or?
I think the facilities committee needs to bring a recommendation. That's what I would prefer.
We all good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrum. Next is our superintendent's report. And I'll ask Dr. Heffner to share the month's report.
Thank you, Chairman Bowman. This month's report's somewhat short. I only have four bullets. But I very much want to focus on my first bullet. And that is to extend a sincere thank you to all those working behind the scenes. We have a lot of staff who have been real troopers the past couple of weeks. They are the unsung heroes of this school system. And I want to take an opportunity to say thank you to them publicly. Our maintenance department, under the direction of Mr. Dell Robertson, has six other employees that works in his department. And they serve this entire school system. They have addressed water leaks, burst pipes, heating issues, septic issues, frozen doors, and countless other out-of-the-ordinary maintenance kinds of things during the past two weeks. They have worked in freezing conditions with latex gloves, under gloves, to try to keep their hands as warm as possible. And when I called Mr. Robertson to see if he had thawed out from running the tractor, he said its heater was broken. The tractor doesn't have a heater, if you look at the tractor I'm referencing. He and his team worked at Taylorsville Elementary all afternoon, one afternoon, to get water back to that school. And when I called to see if he had thawed out, he was like, oh, Dr. Heffner, it's just another day. It's just part of the job. They've never complained one time. The transportation department, under the direction of Mr. John McCurdy. He has five additional employees serving again, the entire school system. This group has gone to every school, cranked every bus, to ensure that they would start on those cold mornings. They've worked on buses when they would not crank. And they have worked to thaw brake lines when there were issues with brake lines. All of this happened at every school in the freezing conditions prior to the bus routes starting as early as 5:30 a.m. in the mornings. Again, not one complaint. They all say it's part of the job, Dr. Heffner. Give them a round of applause. Bus drivers, we have 53 buses in our school system that roll every day, two times a day. Our bus drivers have had to get on extremely cold buses, make changes in pickup schedules at the last minute, and work to ensure that children could get into their homes in the afternoons when they were dropped off. They didn't want any child left stranded in the cold for a pickup or a drop-off during the past two weeks. Again, it's just part of our job, Dr. Heffner. Give them a round of applause. The weather team is made up of Dr. Bill Griffin, Mr. Dell Robertson, Mr. John McCurdy, the Department of Transportation, Mr. Russell Green, and various law enforcement entities. And they provide information when we make inclement weather decisions. This group gets out as early as 4 a.m. in the mornings to drive roads, to check roads, to check specific parts of the county. I cannot say how much I appreciate this group and their input as we work to the best of our abilities to make these difficult decisions. Give the weather team a round of applause. As you can see, we have many individuals that have gone above and beyond the call of duty to ensure our school system continue to operate in these very cold and unusual circumstances. I thank all of them from the bottom of my heart. I also want to thank the parents that have supported the school system and its employees during these unfortunate times. I have really appreciated those that have acknowledged that difficult decisions, sometimes even in the best of circumstances, are still that, they're difficult. And the ones that have been made recently were certainly not easy nor taken lightly. My second bullet. Deborah Watts is working with Mr. Hope to finalize a date for the Award of Honor celebration. We're very excited about this celebration. This event will likely be scheduled during the month of March. And we will announce the specific date and time for that special event in the very near future. I also want to thank the budget committee for the presentation that was made to the county commissioners last night. I thought board member Harry Schrum did a great job presenting the financial situation of the school system. And I am very hopeful the commissioners will be able to help us with some additional funding. And then lastly, Renee Stillwell made the December presentation. Her mother has had additional surgery this week, but I'm going to work with Renee when she gets back to work to schedule a school visit to head night later this month. I would ask that each of you watch for an email later this week with some proposed dates for the school visit. And I just want to remind you how important these school visits are. It means a lot to the staff when you come and they are able to show off the great things that happen at the schools. And so look for that email from me and I'll give you some proposed dates. Any questions?
Dr. Heffner, I'd like to say as far as the school visits go, that's, that's exciting for me as a board member. I enjoy getting out and seeing what schools, what's going on with the schools. We don't see it if we don't go there.
And you'll see something different in everyone. And that's what makes every site so special and unique.
Dr. Heffner, if I could just state that when you, when you do elementary math, and that's really all I was ever good at. When you take 11 employees, you know, what Mr. Robertson has and Mr. McCurdy has, that's 11 people. And you spread out from Bethlehem to Stony Point to Sugarloaf, Wittenburg and all the things in between. We have almost as many board members as we have maintenance staff for an entire school system. Now, albeit, our wages are a little different than theirs. But it's a, it's a testament. And if, if folks in Facebook land, if they were for one moment, before they posted, if they would just think, there's 11 folks, many of whom, if you looked at the salary, which is established by the state, we don't set salaries at the school. You know, just count the number of HVAC units on top of one school, let alone all the schools that we have. Not to mention all the toilets that get stopped. Custodians play a significant role, administrators and teachers. Custodians play a significant role, administrators and teachers, but, you know, it's an enterprise. It is an enterprise, and it's expected to run. And the difference between nineteen eighty-nine and twenty eighteen is that, as parents, we are guilty. We want instant gratification. And everything has to be precise and perfect in our world that we create. But we've got to remember, when we were in elementary school, we had radiator heat. And we were freezing when you rolled in there, but by eleven o'clock, you had the windows up, on the second floor, I might add, with no screens, and probably had a good measure of lead-based paint.
We're a testament for that, aren't we, ladies?
But eleven folks for all these schools and this building. And they always say that the cobbler's kids or the cobbler's shoes are always the roughest looking. Well, when you go by the maintenance facility and the garage, you can tell that we hadn't dedicated many, many dollars or cents to the facade there. So, that's the last place that gets any attention. But we appreciate what those eleven folks do. And what, you know, fifty-three buses, you know, we stress out if one of our cars won't crank. But could you imagine if you had ten percent of fifty-three buses that wouldn't start? And you're depending on five or six folks to make that happen. So, you know, when you look at the enormity of the responsibility that they have. And the weather team, that has to be the worst assignment.
Thank you, Mr. Odom.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business, and I will now recognize Ms. Sherri McCaffrey for policy provisions.
Okay. This has been a very interesting group of policies. And probably because a lot of them deal with the education programs of the school system. We have revised two policies for the second reading, public participation at board meetings, and technology in the education program. I would like to bring these policies back for a third reading, because I think there's still revisions and some policies that we need to look at.
Okay. Board members, if everyone's okay with bringing these back for a third reading. Can I have a motion to bring these back?
Motion, bring back those for a third reading. And I would also move to bring the others back for a second reading that are, because I had some questions that we were working through. So, if you don't mind, if we could bring them all back in our February meeting. And I didn't phrase that very well in the form of a motion, but if someone would second it, I'd appreciate it.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of bringing them back for a third reading, please say yes.
Yes.
Any notes? Thank you, Sherri. Board members, I have assigned each of you to the board committees that you requested, or if you did request, I have assigned you. So, if you're not happy, then fire me. If you had the opportunity to review the 2018 Board of Education Committee assignments, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any notes? That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I note that David Odom is the Transportation Committee. So, Mr. Robertson, feel free to call him. You need some additional assistance.
Especially for the weather team.
Okay. The board will now enter into closed session to discuss personnel pursuant of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dash eleven and GS one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven to address confidential student matters pursuant to the Federal Education Rights Policy Act and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act to discuss matters protected by the attorney client, which will have a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, are any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any notes? That motion carries. Okay, and that will conclude our meeting. So, I want to thank everyone for attending, and we appreciate your support.
Cheryl, Cheryl, will you come up to like the introduction?
Yes, sir.